Call to order the July 20 regular meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcome. It's good to have everybody with us tonight. I would ask if you would, please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on the Reverend Candido Albino, Associate and Latino Pastor at Forest Hills United Methodist Church. And with him is his wife, Pilar Perez. Reverend Albino will conduct the invitation in Spanish and his wife, Pilar, in English. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
For giving us this great honor.
To take you all.
To the presence of the Lord.
The peace of the Lord.
Will be with you all.
Let's pray.
Señor Dios.
Dear God.
Todopoderoso.
All-powerful.
Tu señor que creaste los cielos y la tierra.
You're the one that created heaven and earth.
Tu señor que nos formaste a nosotros.
You're the one that formed us.
Tu palabra dice que pueblo tuyo somos.
The word says that you are your people.
Y ovejas de tu prado.
And we are the sheep.
Hoy señor, invocamos tu presencia.
Today, we ask you for your presence.
En este lugar.
In this place.
Para que tu sabiduría.
For your wisdom.
Sea con cada uno.
Will be with everyone here.
De los caballeros.
Of the men.
Y las damas.
And the women.
Aquí representados.
That are represented here.
Señor.
Lord.
Dale la sabiduría de Salomón.
Give them the wisdom of Salomón.
Para que ellos.
For them.
Puedan tomar decisiones sabias.
To be able to take wise decisions.
En bienestar de tu pueblo.
For the wellness of these people.
Bendice sus casas.
Bless their houses.
Sus familias.
Their families.
In el nombre de Jesús.
In the name of Jesus.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being with us tonight. First item on our agenda is the approval or correction of the meeting minutes, which are included in your agenda.
I'll move for approval.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. A motion passes. Next item is approval of the agenda, including the changes to the agenda on page 226. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next is our recognitions and presentations. And at this time, I'll call on County Manager Mike Downs for a recognition.
Well, we're both excited and sad to announce the retirement of one of our longtime employees, Mr. Jeffrey Brent Wiener. Brent, if you'll come on up and your wife, come on up. Come on up. Yeah. Brent is from Irondale County. He's an Irondale County native and was born and raised in the New Hope Township. He worked alongside three brothers and a sister on the family farm until his graduation from college. Brent holds a BS degree in marketing from Appalachian State, where he also minored in business management. His professional experience includes 13 years as a revaluation director in private industry, supervising projects throughout North Carolina, Georgia, and Virginia. Thirteen years as a revaluation director, county assessor, and tax administrator for Irondale County, and now concluding his career with 12 years as the Cabarrus County Tax Administrator. Along with many years of experience, Brent brings a number of professional certifications to his job. The IAAO Assessment Administration Specialist, a certified North Carolina County Assessor, North Carolina Tax Collector, Certified North Carolina Realtor and Property Appraiser. Those are his formal credentials. His professional credentials here in Cabarrus County. He's been fantastic. He's been the steady hand down in the tax office. He's weathered quite a few storms over the years, quite a few appeal cases. And for the most part, Cabarrus County has come out on the positive side of the majority of them. We are going to miss Brent. We wish him well. And his wife, they are planning to retire and move and start hiking for a living. So... But we wish him well. Again, we're sad to leave, but understand, Brent, that we feel very happy that you are here and thank you for leaving the Tax Administration Department in good hands and in good condition as you take on your next step in life. And we wish you well. Thank you.
And I'd like to present to you this clock. It reads, "In recognition of 12 years of service to Cabarrus County and its citizens, 2003 to 2015, Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, Jeffrey Brent Wiener, Tax Administrator." And what I want to say is, wherever you are, make sure you have good phone connection and make sure you have it.
That's right.
And we need your personal email address because I might need that.
All right.
He's been great over all the years. Whenever I've had a question, he's answered them obviously promptly, and we all know that. Yours is one of those departments that unless somebody has to come in and see you, they don't really know what you do, and they don't understand the effort that you put into it. And it is a massive amount of effort that you have done, and you have helped the county, and you have led us. And so heartfelt, we really will miss you. But don't worry, no matter where you are, we will be able to find you at some point because you are going to be a hard person to follow behind because you have been such an important part... Sorry, let me get my words out. Important part of Cabarrus County and the service that you've done to all the citizens and all the staff members. So we appreciate it. I'm going to give you a hug.
Okay, well, thank you.
Because I am going to miss you. And congratulations, though, because I think retirement must be a great thing. I don't know if I'll know about it anytime soon, but...
I'll send you an email.
That'd be good. You have my email, so you can send me an email on that. And I'm going to let both of you have an opportunity to make some comments.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank my wife for being here throughout all this and supporting me in the work. You can't do a great job without somebody at home taking care of you and helping you out and being your support. So I appreciate that. And I've got some of my staff here. I think y'all stand up. There's some staff around here somewhere. And you can't be a good leader without good staff. And you can't even be a halfway decent one without really great staff. And we have great staff in the tax office. And the tax office is in good hands as we move on. And again, I will leave my contact information so they can ask me questions. And that'll fade away as we fade away into the mountains. But really have enjoyed it here. I've been in the business for 39 years, and I've worked in a lot of counties across the state and other states. And without a doubt, Cabarrus County is the best place that I've ever worked. The most professional leadership from the county commissioners to all of the members of the county management staff have always been so supportive and so good to work with. And it's just been a blessing to work here. I had some notes, so I'll leave something out that I wanted to say. But I just would like to thank Jesus Christ for walking with me through all this. And it's just been a blessing to work here. God bless you all, and call me if you need me. All right, thanks.
Well, he didn't prepare me to say anything. He didn't give me any idea what this was going to be all about. And this is like being in court. This is an incredible chamber. Just thank you for taking good care of him. And we are so looking forward to this next stage in our life. And he has not only been a leader here, he's a leader at home as well. And I am blessed to be his wife. And thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Brent. I echo all those things that were said, but I don't understand why we give you a clock. I thought when you retired, you're supposed to stop watching the clock. But...
I'll think of something to do with it.
Okay, great. Well, best wishes to you. Next on our agenda are informal public comments. And I have a card from Martha Dobson. If you would come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Martha Dobson. I live in Mount Pleasant. I'm also the Mount Pleasant representative on the Cabarrus County Library Board of Trustees. Last Thursday at the library board meeting, we heard the news that Friday hours are going to be restored to the library branches beginning in September. Of the four libraries, three will open on Friday, and Mount Pleasant will not. Since December, library staff and hours have been equally restored to the four libraries. At this point, Mount Pleasant will not open on Friday for at least another year. This past Friday, I met a friend at the Mount Pleasant Library parking lot, and between 12:30 and 1:00, two library patrons parked to visit the library, and it wasn't open. Between 1996, when it opened, and 2009 or '10, when the budget cuts removed all part-time library staff, the Mount Pleasant Library Branch operated six days a week. I asked the Commissioners to research opening the Mount Pleasant Library Branch on Fridays and to make a budget amendment returning that branch to six days a week operating hours this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobson. And that is the only card that I have tonight. Is there anybody else that has anything to add in public comments? If not, we'll move to the next item, which is on our agenda is old business. First is EMS selection of non-emergency franchise provider. And I think Jonathan and Alan Thompson.
Alan and I are simply here if you have any questions. This is the second reading of the ordinance to award a non-emergency franchise agreement.
Great. And so would it be appropriate to make a motion to approve that tonight? Or do we have yet another step?
I believe you don't even require another hearing.
Okay.
No further hearing, just a motion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We've talked quite a bit about this over several meetings.
I would make a motion to adopt the franchise ordinance of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners granting a franchise to operate non-emergency ambulance service to American TransMed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is infrastructure and asset management offer for purchase of tax foreclosure property. And I think Kyle Billifer is with us to talk about that.
This is the second time I've spoken to you about this. It did go up for upset bid. We had no upset bids, so I am here just to get the permission to go ahead and sell it to the first person that put on the bid as we receive no upsets.
Thank you. Any questions for Kyle?
I would make a motion to award the 902 Buick Avenue property to Josh Collins at Journey Investment Group, LLC, and to authorize the county manager and county attorney to finalize the transaction and execute the related documentation.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item is our consent agenda, and you all have that before you, which are all items that we discussed at great length at our last work session. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is new business. We have three items in new business tonight. All three are requests from Cabarrus County Schools. And I think we have Tim Louder and Chairman Barry Shoemaker both with us here tonight to talk about those items. And first one is funding request for addition of classrooms to the new Odell 3-5 School.
Thank you, Chairman Morris and County Commissioner. It's my pleasure to come for you tonight. I think we discussed in our work session the concern we had for the Odell school we have going up. It's designed for 792 children. With our redistricting, we were able to pull kids that were drastically needed from the Cox Mill area and some from Bogers. However, due to the growth projections over the next five years, we have 150 students per year going to be added to that district. And we felt like that once this school opens, we will only have about one year's worth of capacity. We will actually reach capacity at the 792-student level. Therefore, during this construction process, we have the opportunity to go ahead and add six additional classrooms, at which time we can add 148 more kids to the student population. Thus, by... It's about another year and a half, but at least we won't start out at capacity. The cost of that is about $1.315 million. And if we can move forward with that, we can actually add it during this construction cycle and not delay the opening of the school with those six additional classrooms.
Right. And I think you reported to us at our work session that the cost differential between adding those classrooms now and coming back later was very significant.
Yes, sir. This cost here would be in the neighborhood of $9,000 per student seat, whereas a brand-new school ranges anywhere from $20,000 to almost $30,000 per student seat, depending on the grade levels.
Great. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Louder?
I would make a motion to approve the budget revision.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. And next item is purchase of property for the new Mount Pleasant Middle School.
Thank you. As you heard in our presentation on the 13th... Actually, on the 6th, I'm sorry. 13th was ours. On the 6th, we have made the proposal to move Mount Pleasant Middle School to a site adjacent to the existing high school from its present proposed location at the existing middle school site. And in doing so, it would require the purchase of a little over 50 acres, about 52.4, I think, acres, with three small... One large parcel and two smaller parcels. And our school board has voted to approve this purchase and move forward pending your approval, should you be able to work out that contract and purchase that properties for moving this school to the new site.
Great. Okay, questions for Mr. Louder on this item?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to make a statement that for the needs of the students, the middle school students and the high school, to be side-by-side will greatly benefit those students and the education that they get. They'll have so much... So many resources available because of them being located side-by-side. And I appreciate the county manager's work and Tim's work and their school board's work to bring this to us. So with that, I would make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the acquisition of property for Mount Pleasant Middle School and authorize county manager and county attorney to complete the purchase agreement for the property, placing the land title in the county's name, that we authorize the finance director to transfer funds from the capital reserve fund to the appropriate capital projects fund for tracking purposes, and to approve the transfer of funds from furniture and fixtures to the architect as indicated in the related budget amendments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just have one quick question. I know that the Mount Pleasant people are ready to get the school built and done. So what's the timeframe? I mean, does this stay on the timeframe as was expected before? Or kind of how does that play into it for them?
Yes, by moving as quickly as we have. Obviously, that allows us to move forward here. I think obviously we'll have an amendment here as far as architectural... Additional architectural services to site adapt this thing will allow us to go to bids and have those bids in hand by December 15, which falls right in line, I think, with your financing package that you intended to do with December 15, January 15, and have funds available, I think, the 1st of March or somewhere in the neighborhood.
Thank you. And they will be in this school in two years, 2017. August 2017 is the target for them to be in there. Same thing as if it was on the other side.
Absolutely, same target. And it's probably going to be much easier to build simply because we'll have to work around the existing site with students on site while we're trying to do construction.
Great. Any additional questions or discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. On to the next one, purchase of property for Royal Oaks Elementary School.
As we discussed earlier, we are actually rebuilding Royal Oaks Elementary School on the existing school site. And in doing so, this school is going to be much larger than the existing school, almost double the kids. So what we propose to do is buy additional properties that allows us to have a rear exit for our bus traffic, to be able to separate bus traffic from drop-off traffic. And in doing so, we've been able to negotiate the purchase of a piece of property that was at the end of Tennessee Avenue to allow us to access the site from the rear. And I think y'all have had that in your hands, and it's all in order to purchase that for, I think, it's $142,000 or $24,000, I'm sorry, some odd dollars.
Okay. Any additional questions for Mr. Louder?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the related budget amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the updated project ordinance.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion or questions? We'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
These three transactions were short in duration, but involved a great deal of discussion and work over the past couple of years to get to this point. So thank you for your efforts. And I hope the public notices and realizes that we still have tremendous growth demands in trying to keep up with our school population. And so we're working hard to try to do that.
Thank you. And on behalf of myself and the school board, we certainly appreciate your cooperation, helping us move these projects forward as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one question for Mr. Cook. The motion made by Commissioner Poole was exactly what we had in there as our requested action, but we added a resolution into this. Do we need to go back and amend that motion or add another motion to resolution to purchase or acquire the property?
I thought she...
It wasn't?
I think she covered that.
It wasn't on the list, was it?
I thought it was.
Yeah, the first item was a motion to approve the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Authorizing. So I just put... We had three motions listed. I just...
Okay.
Put them all in one motion, but I read everything that was there.
Okay, I missed it. I'm sorry.
That's right.
Sorry about that. Forget I brought that up.
Okay, I just... You know, it helps when we have our... When our attorney makes sure we make the motions correctly.
Better safe than sorry, for sure.
Sorry about that.
Absolutely. Okay, next item up is our appointments to boards and committees. First on the list are Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Committee. Getting that up here. The terms for Commissioner Minnet and Redella Hedrick on the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Committee expire July 31, 2015. Both Commissioner Minnet and Ms. Hedrick are willing to serve another term. So you have other information included in your agenda. What would be the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to reappoint to Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Committee for three-year terms ending July 31, 2018, Commissioner Minnet and Ms. Hedrick.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
I would like, before you move, just for the general public on this particular board, this is a very large group. There are three members each from Alamance County, Cabarrus, Caswell, Chatham, Davidson, Franklin, Granville, Halifax, Orange, Person, Rowan, Stanley, Union, Vance, and Warren. So just to give an idea, this is a very important group, and we don't hear a lot about them, you know, on a general basis because they cover so much territory. But it's really nice that both of these folks are willing to be reappointed because it covers such a large area, and there's so much to learn about what they do. There's a huge learning curve. So I appreciate the fact that they're willing to be reappointed.
Thank you, absolutely. And they perform a very important service in our county. Next item is appointments to the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. An application has been received from Kim Hinson for the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee. He has been pre-qualified by the Regional Alms Budsmen and is eligible to serve. The Regional Alms Budsmen also requests the removal of Mary Boss from the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee due to failure to conduct facility visits and for unfulfilled minimum training requirements. So I think we would do that in two motions. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Kim Hinson.
So moved.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. And then a motion to deal with the request for removal on the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee.
Make a motion to remove Mary Boss from the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee as requested.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
And before you move on that, just again for the people who watch this on TV, there are seven vacant positions on that particular board. And we do have a couple applications, it looks like, and I'm not certain if they haven't been approved by the Alms Budsmen. But if staff could make sure, maybe there's just one other one, but just to double-check and make sure. And anybody that would like to serve, that's also a committee that really needs some people to serve on it. With seven vacant spots, we really need some people to step up.
And I think historically, that has been one that has always had a large number of vacancies. So if anyone out there is interested, we would love to have you fill out an application. Thank you, Commissioner Poole. Next up is appointments and removals to the Transportation Advisory Board. In response to the board's request to solicit more applicants for specialized seats on the Transportation Advisory Board, applications were received from Diane Gridley, Human Services Income Maintenance Case Worker, Skip Craft, Cabarrus Vocational Opportunities Director of Operations, Sharon Corpenning, NC Division of Services for the Blind, and Ann Benfield, Cabarrus Partnership for Children Executive Director. Diane Gridley, Skip Craft, and Sharon Corpenning all reside in Rowan County. If appointed, an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy will be needed for them. Do I hear a motion to accept these applicants with an exception to the residency requirement?
Mr. Chairman, are you needing three individual motions on this one, or...
I think we can do it with two. One for these appointments, including that exception, and then a second motion on the removal.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to remove Patricia Baker from the Transportation Advisory Board roster and then thank her for her many years of service.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. And then next would be a motion for appointments.
I'd make a motion that Diane Gridley be appointed to the human service... as human services representative to complete an unexpired term ending June 30, 2017, and including the exception to the residency provision.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And so that covers that one. Now, the rest of these appointments, I think we can do... Well...
Is supported employment... I don't know exactly what that means. Does...
Yeah, I think that each of these...
Is that Skip Craft?
Those don't coincide, the titles from the motion to the description.
Okay. I would make a motion to appoint Skip Craft to fill the supported employment position for a three-year term ending June 30, 2018, including an exception to the residency provision.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. And then I think we have... I think Ann would... All opposed, no. Motion passes. And then I think we have, I think Ann would be head start, yeah.
I'm just double checking because they're very specific ones in this one. So I make a motion to appoint Sharon Corpenning to the, to fill the social work blind position for a three-year term ending June 30, 2018, including an exception to the residency provision.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes.
And then I would make a motion to appoint Ann Benfield to fill the head start position for a three-year term ending June 30, 2018.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you. And we appreciate all these folks being willing to serve.
And on that one, if we go to the next page, we have a vacant position from county schools. And we have the Chairman of Cabarrus County Board of Education with us. It would be nice, sir, if you could get someone in transportation to submit an application to serve on that particular, because you do transportation for both of our school systems. And so if you could get someone, that would be very helpful. We can show you that after the meeting, if you need us to, to show you exactly which one that is.
Right. I serve as the member from the commission on that board as well. And how all these transportation issues relate to the county transportation services and these various organizations is extremely important. And the greater representation we have, the better job we can do with that.
And we also have position for law enforcement. County manager, can you help with that? Department of Aging?
Yes, ma'am.
And local clergy. We had an excellent minister with us here tonight. So it would be nice if we could get some of those folks that would be willing to submit an application also.
Yeah. And I think we will see that forthcoming. I believe this large group was a result of our discussion at our meeting last month. Okay, we have a number of reports that are included in your packets that you can look over at your leisure. At this time, we would be open to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees. Does anyone have anything to report?
We had our senior advisory board meeting today, and they want me to bring back a challenge to the Commissioners for their rocking chair fundraiser. And they would like for us to get a chair and have somebody rock in it for a while. And so I told them I would get them the details, but they were sending me an email I do not have yet. So just keep that in mind if any of you would be willing to rock later in the year.
Okay.
That's my report.
Thank you.
Although they do a whole lot of stuff there. It is overwhelming when you go to that meeting, the outreach that that board has and what goes on. It's phenomenal. And for those of you who are senior age, if you're looking for something, that is a very active group. I think they think they get the rap of that's where the old people go. But let me tell you, those people are moving and in action. So if you're looking for a little action, I would say check it out on the website.
Thank you. I was afraid you, they were challenging it to one of their dancing events. Rocking chairs, I'm qualified for that. Any other reports? If not, as we have discussed earlier, I would point out that we have a number of vacancies on boards and committees in addition to some of the ones that we've talked about tonight. Those are all posted on our website. We would encourage everyone to take a look at that. And please apply to fill some of those positions. If you have any question, you can certainly contact the clerk or the manager's office or any one of us, and we'll be glad to help you with that. Next is general comments by board members. Anybody have anything? Commissioner Poole?
I do. We're missing somebody tonight. We're so used to seeing some folks in this room with us at every meeting. Mr. Marlowe is not here. He's getting ready to have some surgery. So I'm sure all the Commissioners and our staff members and everyone here wishes him well in his surgery. And also, I'd like to wish Concord City Councilman John Sweat a speedy recovery. Apparently, he had a bit of a motorcycle accident and has a few injuries. But I think he will survive, but he may not be riding a motorcycle anytime soon. So also want to send out our best wishes for a speedy recovery to the councilman and hope that he learned a lesson, apparently, on having a little extra fun on that motorcycle yesterday.
Great, thank you. Anything else? I would just mention very briefly, and I think we'll probably give some more details later on, but this past, last weekend, the National Association of Counties had their annual national convention, which was held in Charlotte. And I think all of us were there at different times. It was certainly very gratifying to see how well Cabarrus County was represented there. Our IT folks won a Digital Counties Award. We had people there from the Health Alliance and Healthy Cabarrus that were presenters to some of the sessions. We were also a recipient of a grant to work on the health rankings in Cabarrus County. I think we were one of three counties in the entire nation that got that recognition. And it just really, when you get out and get around, it's always good to talk to folks from other counties and other parts of the country and hear how they tackle issues and compare notes and see the things we do. But it makes me certainly very proud to see how well-recognized Cabarrus County and our staff are very well-known to those folks and the job that they do here. So thank you for making us proud, all of our staff. Any further comments? We do have need of a closed session tonight for economic development and personnel matters as authorized by North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.11A346. Do I hear a motion that we go into closed session?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. And thank you very much for being with us tonight.